Hi folks, as we had mentioned with school getting started back, you know, the all of the excitement that comes with that and making new friends and getting reacquainted with your old friends and learning things new, you know, it does create some challenges for some families during this school year. And our Paulding County Animal Shelter, they have partnered up with a buddy's hope. And what this is, is for the month of August and September, they are waiving the adoption fees if you will bring in some food items that will be donated. And this is stuff like mac and cheese and pudding cups, you know, cereal bars, stuff like this. And what where this is going to go is going to help the backpack program for Herschel Jones Middle School and Paulding County High School. This is going to guarantee that these students that on the weekends and the holidays, they're still going to be able to have a nutritious meal and they're not going to miss a breakfast or a lunch or whatever the case may be. So for the month of August and September at the Paulding Animal Shelter, all adoption fees are waived if you bring these food items. And we appreciate them partnering with a buddy's hope to do this to help all of our students out here in Paulding County at these two schools. Everyone knows that there is a ton of history in Paulding County. And on the second Saturdays at the Paulding History Museum, now that is located at 295 North Johnston Street, that's in the parking lot or off to the side there of Herschel Jones Middle School, the little red schoolhouse. Show up that afternoon and there's going to be some Cherokee legends and storytelling that will take place. You'll get a little little insight into how that the Cherokee, how they played a part in our history and made them who made us who we are today. So plan on joining the Cherokee Legends and Storytelling on August the 9th from 1:00 to 2:00. Now, if you want after that to finish planning your day, that afternoon at Veterans Park, that's at 240 Constitution Boulevard, there's going to be a movie under the stars that will be taking place. Mufasa will be showing, the activities will start at 7:00 PM and the movie will start at sundown. So finish your day out after you've got that history lesson and kick back with the family and the friends, bring your lawn chairs, your picnic basket and sit back and relax under the stars and watch Mufasa that day. We're moving right on through the month of August and we are at August the 16th. You talk about jam packed. That morning, I want you to go out to Pickett's Meal. This is at 4432 Mount Taber Church Road and go to Pickett's Meal and they are having a day in the life of the Confederate soldier. You'll be able to speak with the reenactors that put on the reenactment shows that they're at the park and be able to ask some questions. What was it like a day in the life of a soldier that in the battle that took place right there at Pickett's Meal? We told you, there's a ton of history here in Paulding County and we want you to take advantage of that. So plan on being at Pickett's Meal on August the 16th and I know you're really going to enjoy that. Now that afternoon, we're going to make you have to make a decision here. You're going to have to decide what you want to do, who you like. If you are into Pete Floyd, Interstellar Echoes is going to be performing at the historic Dallas Theater on Main Street in downtown Dallas. And they will be starting at, I believe that show is from 7:00 to 9:00. And the ticket prices is $25. Early price on those tickets is $23 and a discount. So please get your tickets for Interstellar Echoes for the Pete Floyd Tribute Band. Know you're going to have a great time. And hey, when that one sells out, then there's also another concert at 240 Constitution Boulevard, back at Veterans Park. And that is going to be the Glow Band, the Eagles Tribute Band. They're going to be performing here in the park under the stars. So go ahead and bring your family, bring your blankets, your chairs and get ready to take that ride on that dark desert highway with the Eagles Tribute Band. The activities will start that evening at 7:00 PM and the concert will start exactly at 8:00 PM. So you've got a lot to choose from in the month of August and that day. I know you're excited and plan your day accordingly, but take in some of these events. We know you're going to enjoy it.
I would respectfully ask, as we come to the podium, to sign in and respectfully ask you to take five minutes to give us your thoughts and concerns. And thank you. Oh, hey, Virginia. So we'll go ahead and get this, get it started. If y'all will, please turn off your phones and your mobile devices so we won't have any interruption during the meeting. And if y'all will, stand with me and let me open this up in a word of prayer, okay? Father, we come to you this morning asking for your blessing, your guidance. And I was reading in Psalms today where it says, "Direct our path all day long." So we ask you that for wisdom, for strength and for encouragement to make this county the going the right direction and do what's necessary to keep it growing. So we love you and we thank you for everything that you've done for us in the past and in the future. We love you in Jesus's name. Amen. And y'all say the pledge allegiance to the flag, which is also. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And actually, the purpose is to hear your comments on the tax increase. And I'm going to first open it up to a public hearing and I'm going to ask Ms. Tabitha to go ahead and start us off.
I hope this screen will show up in just a moment so you can see it. There we go. Okay, today we're having the third and final public hearing for the maintenance and operations millage rate. So what I would like to do is to go through the process and give you an explanation of what we're doing and how we arrived at what, at the millage rate for the 2025 digest year. So first, everybody received an assessment notice. So a few weeks ago, all the tax assessors put a value on all of the properties and that notice went out to each parcel. Those are collectively put together and as a total to give us a gross digest. And so that gross digest.
She can't hear good, so just get it close to the mic.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I thought I was loud. Thought I was too loud, actually. So we have the assessments that went out. Those are calculated together to get the gross digest. And then each individual has exemptions. And so those exemptions are calculated into the net digest. And the net digest is used to determine what our net levy will be based on the millage rate. So you have your assessed value multiplied by your millage rate equals the taxes. And that's what's used to fund the operations of the county. Rollback rate, so taxpayer bill of rights, 1999 required that we roll back the millage rate for any additional value and assessment. So we calculate what the rollback was. The rollback would be 4.0 meals from the 4.1 that we were last year. And we had advertised that we will need a 4.3 meals to provide the services. Five-year history add, this is again the collective, so this is the total digest value. It's the value of all of your properties within the county. And that brings us to the advertisement and the tax increase for the year. So I feel like I've made that a little bit confusing. You have your assessed value, your assessed value for each parcel is collectively combined into the gross digest. From that gross digest, we have take out exemptions to get our net digest and your net digest is multiplied by the millage rate to get your total tax levy. If your value goes up from the assessed value, then we're required to roll back or advertise an increase for each, for the county MNO. So what are your surrounding millage rates? These are 2024 values and Paulding is currently at 6.2. That this, that would be a 4.1 plus the 2.1 for fire, bringing us to 6.2. In 2024, we were the lowest around. The every one of these jurisdictions are doing the same process now. So that's why I don't have 2025's numbers. So what have we done over the past few years? If you'll remember back around 2009, we had a declining digest and we had to increase the millage rate a little bit during that, after that, when the values start coming back down, I mean, the values start increasing, we reduced the millage rate. And over time, that has gone down to 2024 was a 4.1 and we are advertising a 4.3. So where do my tax dollars go? 71% of your tax bill goes to the school. About 17% goes to maintenance and operations. Those are used to fund county services. And that is the reason for the public hearing today is that 17%. Overall, is the millage rate going up or is it increasing? The maintenance for operations is, was 4.1 in 2024 and we are advertising and requesting a 4.3 in 2025. However, the county bond was a 1.0 in 2024 and we are requesting a .8 in 2025. Fire tax is remaining the same, school tax is remaining the same, therefore there's no increase in the millage rate. The millage rate last year was 24.875 and the increase in the millage rate for 2024 and 2025 are equal, 24.875. House Bill 581, establishing a floating home state exemption, that's something that's new, that's going to be on your tax bill. So every one of you, if you had an increase in value, you have an exemption for that value minus an inflation factor. So if your value went up $20,000, you should have an exemption for just less than $20,000. And it also allows us to call for a referendum, which will be coming in the next few weeks, but to call for a referendum to ask voters to put in a penny sales tax and that will be used to reduce your property taxes. So what does this mean to you as a homeowner? If your value, this one's a little bit extravagant, so this one had an increase of 13% this home did. So the value in 2024 was 430,000 and the value in 2025 was 486,000. The 40% assessment was 172 in 2024 and 194 in 2025. Therefore, this particular parcel has a floating homestead of 22,500. So there's an exemption of 22,500 for this particular year. And over the past few years, we've increased the home state exemption from 2,000 to 10,000. So that's an additional amount. So let's calculate it out. Let's see what the difference is between the two. The school tax, so the school doesn't have the float and the current year tax, the increase would equate to about $397. So previous year was $3,005 and the current year is $3,402. So the school tax increase is $397.69. The county MNO piece increases $32.40 based on the increase from the 4, 1 to 4.3. However, the bond will decrease and your net, so the net change for the county portion is $16. Most, on average, our increase was 5%. In this particular example, the increase of 5%, same, same type scenario, there's a home, there's a float, $10,000 for county MNO and the increase on this particular parcel is $24.37 to the county. However, there's a reduction of $21.26, leaving a net change for 2025 years of three, 2025 I feel like that's very confusing, to say the least. So if you have any questions that could help maybe the audience explain the details and then we will open it up for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. I appreciate that. And I do want to take this time, Sheriff Henson, thanks for coming in. Elected official, I didn't see you in the back when I first got started. So I'll open it up for public comments. We will ask you to come up to the podium, sign up to the right of where Ms. Pollard's at and we'll time you for five minutes if you'll consider that. So open it up for public comments at this time. Just stand up and come up here. Here comes the first one. Just state your name, address it to the chairman and then sign in, please.
Mark, I don't think I should be paying school tax. So I'm 68 years old, so.
Please sign in, sign your name.
Sir? Go ahead and sign in.
Another?
Can I have somebody write this for me? I'm kind of.
Yeah, somebody will.
You gotta. Ronald Mashburn. I was just wondering, my name is Ronald Mashburn, by the way. I lived here for 25 years now. The maintenance, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry to not say that first. The maintenance, does that go towards roads and, you know, and I'm not exactly sure what the maintenance part is of, I should have refreshed myself before. Is there any way you can kind of explain in brief what the maintenance is?
Sir, at the, at the conclusion of the hearing, the county manager will address that. But any comments, please, please continue.
Okay. I would, I would like to address the traffic. I know in the 25 years, there wasn't anything past Home Depot on the, on the right side as you're going towards Powder Springs, barely anything on the left side. Now, as we increase, we, the traffic is getting worse. And I, and I know somebody at, and you know, you're on the internet, whether you believe it or not, somebody had posted, they were proud about a roundabout. That's not what we need in this county. Roundabouts is not what we need in this county. Going through Hyrum now on the weekdays is, at rush hour is crazy. So you try to avoid those. I know other people try to avoid those. And the, the light system, I think they can improve the light system to be in conjunction with another. I've, I've lost the word for it. In sync with each other. I think that would be, sorry, I'm talking with my hands too, I'm putting my pocket. I think that would be help, that would help the traffic flow in there because we have people that when you're, you get up and go, but then we have people fighting or sitting in the intersection when the light changes. And nobody, from the other opposite or the other directions can either turn or go straight. So they're backing up. Also, the big trucks, I know that we have to have our supplies of everything. I'm not faulting big truck drivers. Something has to be done too because it just, I don't know what can be done. I don't know, a truck lane. But some of these lanes, we, I know, we worked hard to do Macklin Road, you know, now that's a two-lane road. That helped a lot. But things like going to Villa Rica, now we've, all this open land, people are building, 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 people are coming and coming. I know when I came out here, it was because the rates were cheaper. You know, you could buy a house cheaper out here. Now we're competing with like Cobb and all them. I worked for Cobb and I would like to see more businesses out here too, besides liquor stores, car washes. Some of that would employ more people. These, these two things, you know, what, you got three or four people working at each, at each car wash or even a liquor store, two people at one time. I noticed there's a big warehouse that's on Bill Caruth that they just built too long ago. I don't know what the purpose of that's for or if we're waiting for somebody to lease it. But, and I get back to the roads, going out to Villa Rica on 61, as you all know, it gets backed up because of the school and that's, you know, that's expected because we have so many kids going to school. But we also have to address the accidents that happen on there. If we have an accident on there, it shuts the whole thing down and everybody's going, you know, and people don't like it when they cut, you cut through their subdivision or, you know, take a back road or whatever and now it's more traffic on those roads. I would like to see if, at the least, if we don't expand, or well, if we expand it, it's just a turn lane all the way down Villa Rica Highway. If we could, you know, so people can get in that turn lane because as y'all know, I don't know if you've ever been down Villa Rica, you could sit there for a while and now both sides of the traffic are getting, are getting backed up. And then if a wreck, that's, it's just, we've totally lost it there. But I know this is not the time for, but I would like to see our, our fire department and our police department build back up. I was a fireman in Cobb County, retired. We can't live without those guys. Now, we're, we're, I know we're some, at some stations, there's like two people. And that's just ridiculous. We need to have more firemen, more policemen, better pay.
Serve your thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
There again, please sign in.
All right, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Emily Gladden. I'd like to thank you first off for allowing me to speak this morning. There is a lot of talk about the housing and how they're going up all over the place, which I'm not concerned about. But to me, in that house, whether it is a rental or it is an owner occupancy, those people pay taxes. They pay property taxes, they pay whatever taxes that they pay. So I am having a problem understanding why we that are already here in this county are going to have to add, you're going to have to add more taxes to us when you've got more people coming in. Whereas more people that are coming in, I can name as many going out because the taxes are just too high. And I don't normally do this, but yeah. And people talk about Paulding County is growing and the houses are being turned, built at every turn. Well, for each new house, as I said, there's somebody living in it and they're paying taxes, they're paying property taxes. If it's a rental, the owner's paying property taxes. This county is full of people that struggle. We struggle, I can name away, I can name you people that are moving out of the Paulding County taxes. County taxes outrageous now. This county is full of people that struggle now to pay taxes, and you want to raise them. I'm 65, so of course, my school taxes are gonna go down half, you know, gonna go down. But I still struggle to pay my car, my house payment, because I live on disability and my little meager retirement, my husband's disability. Then if you raise my taxes, that's gonna null the decrease in my property taxes. In other words, it's not gonna make any difference, because I'm still gonna have to pay that extra in taxes. And as I say, we, you know, we already struggle, and I would really appreciate a true and legitimate reason why the need for the tax increases. I deeply pray for each one of you, that you were looking to your hearts and see that this is the wrong move to make, that you were elected to serve the county, serve the residents of the county. And I just don't see how this tax increase is going to serve the people of the county. I'm a person of the county, and we struggle as it is. We make it by God's grace and God's mercy. That's how we make it. He is my provider. But it's still a struggle. Like I said, I live on, we live on my husband's disability and my little retirement. So I would just pray that you would reconsider the tax increase and see if there's not some other way you could take it from somewhere else, or something. I just don't understand the little legitimacy of the tax increase. I don't quite understand what are you planning to do with it. I know she's already talked, but I don't, I don't quite understand. Like I said, you were elected to service the residents of this county, and I don't see that this tax increase would do that. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. The next, okay. Sign in, address to the chairman.
How much was the school tax that you said that's gonna go up on that one house? Uh, 300. Was there a... Hold your phone or something. Okay.
I was hoping, excuse me, I was hoping somebody from the school board would be here. I have some problems with some of this. Why are we handing out computers to every kid in this county?
Ma'am, if you would, just, can you, can you just introduce yourself? We did not hear your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lucille Hunter. Why are we not having the parents sign for these computers? How many computers are we gonna hand out to these kids when, or cords or everything? When all they have to go up and say, "I lost mine," or "It got stolen." Do you know that this is gonna go, going on? Is there anything on these computers that show Paulding County School District owns this computer, so they can't be pawned? Our taxes are already so high. My daughter, on a $420,000 house, her taxes are $4,500. And we were just told how much, almost $400 on that house, that the school district is getting more. When are we gonna make these kids accountable, or the parents accountable, for these computers? You guys have no idea how many are lost already in, what, 10 days, the first week of school? Why are we not requiring insurance on these computers? There's no accountability. We need to think for these citizens that can't afford a lot anymore, why their taxes are going up because irresponsible school board. I lived in California until 1989. We had Proposition 13. Do you all want us to start this again here in the state of Georgia? I'll be right there doing it. We need to have accountability for things here in Paulding County. My grandson, on a $380,000 house, he almost, he pays 39, over $3,900 already. Kids can't afford houses anymore here. We need to start thinking responsibility. Be accountable for what you're spending your money on. How many senior citizens can't afford a lot of things? I can, but that doesn't help all these other people. You need to think of what you're spending the money on, and not pull up the darn asphalt out of, of front of Mount Tabor Park how many times, and still it's like this when we go over it. Be accountable for what you're spending your money for. Because I will start a Proposition 13 in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Already signed in. My name is Cindy Oldham. And Sandy, I live in your district, so, howdy, we met before, so. I moved here in Paulding as of, next Monday will be eight years ago. And one of the things that attracted me to Paulding was the tax rate, because being lower in areas. At that time, I've had worked from home for many years, even back from the Dollop Internet days. So I could live anywhere in, I was staying in the state of Georgia on purpose, but I could live anywhere that I could get good internet, like the housing, and I wanted to get rural, because I moved from literally being three stop signs from Cobb Hospital to out here. So you can understand wanting to get away from all that, so. I, when I received my tax valuation for this next year, when I bought my house, I paid $125,000 for it. My new valuation came in at 291. It was an increase of $26,000. I did file an appeal, which I got the rejection yesterday, saying, "Oh, well, basically, we hate it for you." Even though I sent them comparable showing a lot of values similar in sizes and in my zip code were less. But anyway, so you get that, and then the increase of 7.58% means, before trying to figure out her math, that brought me back nightmares of being in business calculus at Kennesaw State. You know, we're looking at a $700 raise for a me, and I'm not even in a average home price for the county. So you look at that, and for me, you're looking at probably about a month and a half worth of groceries. And I usually eat pretty cheap, about 50, 55 bucks a week. And I'm just, you know, a 62-year-old person, recently retired because of, A, I took my jobs and has taken, hit my industry hard. So, you know, I'm really paying attention to numbers more, and as others have pointed out, you've got a lot of growth in the county. And you won't, you know, you won't grow to a degree, because you need that, otherwise things start going downhill. But it would seem to me that there should be a way to have all that new growth, be able to balance the budget without having to go up on taxes, and with attitude of, "Well, we're less than other counties." Well, good, keep us less than everybody else. You know, figure out the ways to crunch the numbers, and really double-check every dollar that's being asked for, and determine what really is truly necessary. So I just ask, what I ask y'all to really think about.
Good morning. I previously signed in. My name is Michael Chaco. I would like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for allowing me to have breath today, to be here, and to live in this great country. Our kids these days won't be able to buy a house in Paulding County. I have a 21-year-old son who's trying to buy a house, and he can't find one for under He works hard, but it's unattainable. He's gonna struggle, and these tax increases are gonna hit him a lot harder than they're gonna hit me. I don't know who did the assessment on my house, but I live in an 1,100-square-foot house that's appraised at $300,000. It's ridiculous. I couldn't sell it for half that price. Your mission statement says that you're, you would like to enhance the lives of the residents of this county, but I don't see any enhancements coming. I don't see roads being fixed. I see a lot of new houses being built, and traffic being delayed by the new turn-in lanes they're putting in, and I am very concerned about the number of people that will be on our roads. I also wonder how much money we're making from selling water, now that we've, we have a plant that produces our own water, how much income that makes. Because I know it's very lucrative to do, and there's a lot of money in the water industry. And by not having to pay Cobb County Marietta Water Authority anymore, there should be an increase in revenue there. Once again, I'd just like to state that I am against raising our taxes. We need to think about the future, think about our kids, think about where we want this county to be, and the values we want to hold in this county. I don't believe raising taxes, it might be a small one this time, but it's a small one every time. And if we don't stand up as the residents and voice our opinion, then it's on us. I just, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Kenny Jackson. I signed in earlier. The first thing I want to do is, a person I met the other day, he got a divorce, and he got custody of his kids, and it was really important to him to keep his kids in the school system that they were in. So he was cutting what he could to make ends meet. He was pretty proud of that he was able to cut about $150 a month from his expenses by just cutting out cable, stuff like that. Well, then he gets his new tax assessment and finds out that now he owes $100 more dollars a month for his taxes. So everything that he sacrificed for now goes to the county. And what I want to ask you is, when's it enough? When do you have enough money? When do you, when do you, when do you become like a citizen and make it work with the money that you have, instead of going to the people and asking for more money? Do any of you have the backbone to vote no on this? You know, you, when the election time comes around, and you go out to see your constituents, and you tell all the people, "Vote for me, because I'm gonna represent you." Do you think any of your constituents want you to vote yes for this? That they would want you to vote yes for higher property taxes? One thing I don't understand is, if my house goes up, say, $100,000 in property value, why does Paulding County decide they need more money of that? What has changed that Paulding County says, "I need more money, because your house is worth more now"? What did you provide for me for that? And second, I'd like to know, and I'd like for you to work on it, that we need to vote, have a vote on our chief tax assessor in this county. Right now, that person is appointed, and there's nothing we can do about it. You have us vote on the tax collector, Kayla Amos, and she does a great job. She does a great job. If you've ever called and talked to Kayla, or anybody in her office, they're pleasant, they're nice, easy to talk to. I challenge you to call the tax assessor's office. It's like talking to that wall right there. You can't talk sense to them. They're right, you're wrong. And that's all it comes, you know, Board of Equalization, anything of that nature, it's unpleasant to even call and talk. So if we have a problem with that office, I think it starts with the head. So why don't we get to vote on that? Why don't we get to say, "We're not pleased with that. Let's make a change." Because he has a direct effect on what we pay in taxes. Kayla, which is voted on, she doesn't have any effect on what our taxes are. All she does is collect. And like I say, she does a great job. I think she's a great person for that. And I think that the graph that she had showed saying 71% of our money goes to the school system, that's a huge number. That's a huge number. That's a lot of money. And for that money, I think we should be getting top-notch education. But I don't think we are. I don't think we are in this county. And I have something to back that up. And I've got some statistics here, and just to let you know where I got them, I got them from the U.S. News and World Report. Our county is 15 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, which is on par with the rest of the country. So we can't say that our schools are overcrowded, I guess, and not have enough teachers. In elementary school in Paulding County, and this is the most current that I could find, so maybe it's changed, the proficiency in reading in elementary is 39%. 39% of our kids are proficient. 43% are proficient in math in elementary. In middle school, 40%. So it goes up one percentage point in middle school for reading. It drops 10% to 33% in math. And in high school, the reading proficiency is 39%. And in math, it's a staggering 18%. 18% of the kids come out of our high schools that we pay a lot of taxes to are proficient. That means, you know, that's, that's a big number. Where could you have a job that you only have positivity of 18% and keep your job? Where would that be? Nowhere, except in the school system. That's the only place. As long as you don't show up drunk, or put your hands on your kid, on the kids, you've got a job, from what I see. I mean, it's, and I've had a kid that came through Paulding County School. She's not there anymore. But for that, you know, I think we should be getting a lot more for our money than what we're getting. You know, it's funny, the school board, and I know you don't have much to do with it...
Mr. Jackson, your thumbs up.
Okay, but you need to have something to do with it, you know, with the school board. You need to rein that in, because that's a big problem. You know, if we're paying that much money, let's get some results for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jamie Dickerson. I live over off Highway 92. I signed in a little bit earlier.
Jim, you already signed in?
Yes, sir, I did. I signed in earlier this morning, sir. I've got notes. I'm a preacher, so if I, you give me five minutes, I'll be up here for an hour. So I'm, I'm gonna try to follow the notes this morning, and three things that have happened this morning that I agreed with, well, wholeheartedly, was the prayer that Mr. Estes opened up with. Thank you, sir. One reason I moved to Paulding County back in 1994. Pledge to the American flag, and the presentation this lady made, and she agreed it was confusing, very confusing, to all of us. Not her fault, but it was very confusing. So this morning, I want to keep things pretty succinct, but I'm a proud resident of Paulding County. Often, the people are, you know, unheard, overseen, but Paulding County's a proud county, and I'm a hard-working citizen. I've paid my taxes. My taxes have went up since I bought my home in 2013. It went up 320%. My first tax bill on my home was $1,000. It's now $5,800. That's insane. Absolutely insane. Fortunately, I've got a good job, but my kids are grown. They're struggling to buy homes. They're struggling to pay their taxes. homes. They're struggling to pay their taxes, just like everybody else who's spoken today. It's difficult in this economy for people to pay their taxes. And let me be very clear, as a citizen of this county, I voted for the change in leadership at the Sheriff's Department. I voted for you. I voted for everybody that's sitting on this that I could vote for. I'm glad for the change. But this morning, I'm pleading for common sense and compassion to the people in this county because the tax rate increases, it's got to stop, like the gentleman just said. When's enough enough? So this morning, and I want you to be very clear, that I am completely, instanzial against any tax increase in this county, absolutely against it. Inflation is still killing us. There's people struggling to put food on the table. Fortunately, I'm not one, but, you know, we, as a church and as an individual, we help people every month that just don't have enough money to put food on the table. You've got elderly people that are deciding whether they're going to pay for food or they're going to buy the medicines that they need. We live in the United States of America. Paulding County shouldn't be that way. We shouldn't have to make those kind of decisions. The gentleman said while I go that, you know, when is enough enough? When do you guys decide that, hey, you know, we don't need any more money? Not going to get into the statistics. They're there. The tax revenue from property in 2024 was a massive amount. The total revenue from taxes, not just property taxes, was a massive amount. Have we done audits on all the budgets that you've got out there now? Have we looked at all the waste? We've got to stop what we're doing. If I ran my budget the way budgets are run in county government, city governments, I'd be living in a box. You wouldn't be getting any tax money. We've got to watch our budgets. We've got to control the way we spend money. It's just what I'm trying to do in the federal government right now. You know, you can't just, you've got to cut spending. You've got to see... And you can drive over any road. I agree with the school comments. I agree with the road comments, but you can go to any road in Paulding County and knock the front end out of your vehicle on potholes. When's enough enough? We've got to spend the money the way we need to spend it, where we need to spend it. We've got to be wise with our funds. We've got to do as in to the Lord with everything that we do. And I know you agree with that, Mr. Estes. You're the one on this board that I've met when you were campaigning. You know, the Lord is our help. That's it. That's the bottom line. Whether you believe or not, the only reason, whether you are a Christian or not this morning, the only reason you have breath is because of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's it. And we've got to honor Him in everything that we do because He'll take it away. He'll take it away. And I'm here to tell you today that, you know, we've got roads that are in disrepair. I was a firefighter paramedic for 15 years down in South Georgia, first paramedic in my department. Most of my friends are police officers and firemen, you know? They have to have three and four jobs just to survive in this county. I agree that firefighters and police officers, we've got to ramp those up. You know, firefighters are a burden to the county until your house is burning down. Sheriff's Department, they're a burden to the county taxpayer until somebody's shooting at you or you need them. They're a necessary part of our county government. They need to be taken care of. We need to watch everything that we spend. We need to make sure that this community stands for what it was built on many years ago. I love Paulding County. I'm a proud resident of Paulding County, and I want to see this commission get a backbone and vote no to any tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Charlotte Johnson. I live out towards Yorkville. I have met Officer Henderson. He has been to my church, and we have a lot of problems out there. And last Thursday was a good example when a guy got killed out there in Yorkville, in front of my church. And the reason why Wednesday nights when we have Bible study, we stand out there and we watch, people don't do what they're supposed to do with the sign. They come straight instead of turning, simply because they're new residents out there in Yorkville and don't know the area. So my concern is, yes, we have to pay taxes, and I pay taxes too. Mine's almost $5,000 a year, and I think it's ridiculous. I am on disability now because I was hit by a teenager here in Paulding County, which was only 19 years of age. I have iron from head to toe in my body, but I thank the Lord for it to see another day. I don't trust in nobody but the Lord. And so if I didn't have Him on my side, I wouldn't be standing here today. So that's why I said taxes is ridiculous. I paid out over $10,000 last year trying to get my road so I can go up and down it because it's like the guy said, up and down like this right here, and that's ridiculous. And the reason why I had to pay out the money is because my taxes, I guess, is not good enough for Paulding County. And my road was turned into a private road one day when I came in from work. And I said, "How did that happen?" Nobody has gave me a straight answer. So I'm dealing with it. And in order for me to live on that road, I grew up out there. In order for me to live on that road and drive my car without it tearing up, I had to pay for every single thing that goes on on that road. There's five houses on that road. Some of them pitches in and help out when they can, but they can't afford it. I have one resident, she looks at me and almost cusses me out every time I speak to her, and I think it's crazy, but it's all right. Because if the Lord was here and she did that towards Him, He would keep speaking, and that's what I do, is keep speaking. She has four children, and I understand that, but still, you don't take your frustration out on nobody. And so, unlike everybody else, I vote no against the taxes. I don't have childrens in school. I did, but my kids are out of school, and they have struggled to get what they want. They work two jobs in order to get it. And if they didn't, they wouldn't be able to make it because I can't help them no more. I used to, but I can't no more because I'm struggling myself. And until we can come to a agreement on these county taxes, it's going to be this way. I vote for people. I have been up here, I don't know how many times, trying to get help. Nobody hear what I'm saying, but it's all right. And also, a couple of months ago, maybe six weeks ago, we had a storm out there, and a tree fell down across the road. We were out of power till 12 o'clock that night. Someone came out and cut the tree up, pushed it to the side of the road, but with the heavy equipment that came out, it messed the road back up in three different places. Who's got to fix that? I do, if I want the road right. I have an Avalon. The car is scrubbing now. I can't even come out through that way, so we have to drive the truck to get out of there. And I think it's uncalled for. That's just my opinion, but sometimes my opinion don't count. But I keep praying every day that things will get better, and I know one day it will. I might be dead and gone, but it's still going to get better. I have a neighbor that lives off to the left of my house. He gets out there and shoot every day, every day, up until about 9:00. I've had two bullets come over to my house, and I've seen the bullets. Me and my husband walking up the driveway came right over his head. It could have hit him and killed him. And nobody would have said, "Well, I'm sorry it happened." And then the other one plowed up my yard. Who's doing something about it? Nobody. I talked to an officer about it, and he said, "Well, when it actually happened, I'd come out and do something." Why would you wait till something happened before you come out? It's uncalled for, but yeah, we got to pay these taxes though and can't get an officer out there when things are happening. My sister took sick last year. It took them 40 minutes to get an ambulance to my sister's house to see about her. 40 minutes, and they're just right down the street, 10 minutes away the fire department is. But it took them 40 minutes to get out there. And at the time she took sick, I had just had hip surgery. I had to hop down there and help my sister because nobody would come and help her, and we called for help, and it's uncalled for, but you still want me to pay your county taxes.
Ms. Johnson, your time's up.
I thank you for the time, but take things in consideration. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there another?
Sign in here?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Al Prater. I live out in the city community. And I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit this morning about legacy. It seems there's a real common thread through the comments that's been made today, and that is how it's affecting the seniors in this community. And that seems to be a devastating blow to some of their ability to maintain their lifestyle and also to their commitment to stay where they are in this community. And that's what I want to talk about. I want to talk about the benefits of keeping your base. I understand you want to grow the community. I understand we want Paulding to be big. We want it to be great, but if you've got a revolving door and you've got new folks coming in and you've got folks leaving, chances are those folks leaving have a whole lot more tie to this community than the folks coming in. And if that happens, it will change everything. If you think we have issues now with police and fire, if you revolve that door too much and you have all new folks coming in here that do not care about the community at large, those costs will go through the roof. It's something to be considered. With that being said, there is a burden of taxes that everyone has to deal with, but that burden should be placed where it belongs. And I'm going to speak on that today, and what I mean by that is, if taxes have to go up, those taxes should not be placed a burden on people whose income has stagnated or they are on assistance. To do that actually diminishes them. It actually makes your community poorer. At that point, those people have to determine where they can stay, where they will stay to survive. Now, I know, for me and my family, family is premium. And I know we want to live in a community where family is premium. My niece brought her family here to be with us because they knew the benefit and the value that we gave to their family. Not only, well, I'll speak on that in just a second. If you can keep your seniors in your community, if you can keep them viable, you can build community that is strong. If you lose them, you lose that resource for your families. When you lose that resource, it breaks your community. I want to talk about a little bit of the benefit of seniors. They're great citizens. I don't see those seniors brawling in the street up here in Dallas. It don't happen. They have a great love for the community as a whole, much more than folks that are just coming in. They understand it. They understand the importance of keeping your community strong. They are amazing volunteer base. There's no way we run our election process without them. They can benefit us so greatly in this county and take a burden off of the county budget if we can keep that volunteer base strong. They are a huge knowledge base. Most of these people have retired from jobs that they stated, not as in new people that jump from job to job, but a lot of these seniors have been in these jobs for years. And when we need resources, as far as maybe a senior council to come in and volunteer to say, "This is what we think," I think that would benefit the county tremendously. They benefit the younger families, oh my gosh, beyond measure. My daughter just went back to school to get her nursing degree, which benefited her, which moved up their status in the county, made it possible for them to actually be here and to thrive. They couldn't have done it without me and my wife being there to watch their child. It was too much of a load on them. It holds families back when they don't have that resource. School assistance, the young lady was talking about schools and how schools need to improve. These seniors have wonderful education benefits that they can share with, and they have a nurturing environment for these children. If we can bring them in...
Mr. Al, your time's up.
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry. All this coming to say, you have a staggered release of taxes for your seniors. I think the taxes should be cut back for school tax on seniors at 62. If you do that, when people start to develop, "What am I going to do as I retire? Can I afford to stay here as a retiree?"
Mr. Al, your time is complete.
If they know it's coming and they can take that benefit...
Sir, I'll ask you, your time is complete. Thanks.
Thank you. It's late in the hour, but do we have any more that wants to speak?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, what I have to say is relatively simple. I've been living in Paulding County 40 years.
Sir, if you don't mind, just introduce yourself to...
Oh, I apologize. My name is Paul Prater. I'll also tell you that Ronnie and I know each other, that fellow in the back and I know each other. We're all retired from Cobb County government, and I'll get back to that in just a second. I've been living in Paulding County for 40 years. In 2018, I bought the house that I currently live in. I gave $159,000 for that house, and currently it is valued at $345,000. Do I understand why? Yes, I do. It is all because of large companies like BlackRock that decided to buy up houses, and they didn't bid. They come in and paid whatever they had to, and it drove up real estate prices. I understand that completely. The reason that I say that here, between 2018 and today, I paid more than twice the amount of property tax that I paid in 2018. Where'd my money go? That's a pretty simple question. Where'd my money go? I'm not going to address the school system. I know the school system makes up 71% of my overall tax debt. I'll address that when I go to talk to the school board. I understand that what you, the tiny portion of the overall tax budget, like I said, I retired from Cobb County government. I understand that you only are making a decision on a teeny, tiny portion. However, however, I'm tired of tax increases. I don't care how small it is. I don't care for what reason. I truly don't. I've reached a point where I'm standing here going, "Why am I paying twice as much in property tax today as I paid in 2018, and you can't make do with that money? What'd you do with what I gave you? Is the Sheriff's Department better off?" And I'll say the same thing the other fella did. I voted for this sheriff. I was glad to see the other sheriff go. My daughter got raped, and the sheriff in charge didn't do a thing in the world about it. I want to see a better Sheriff's Department. I want to see a better fire department. I want to see better education for my kids, but I'm tired of paying taxes. I'm tired of every time I turn around, "Well, we got to do this," because I understand how it works. I understand how it worked in Cobb County. In Cobb County, we were told, "If you don't spend everything we give you to do this year, we're going to take more from you next year." So we were encouraged. I'll tell you a little story. I was a lieutenant in charge of the Special Rescue Unit in... I was a lieutenant in charge of the special rescue unit in Cobb County, Cobb County's heavy rescue team. I get a phone call from a guy and he goes, hey, do you need anything, any Hearst equipment? I'm like, nope. My truck's got everything it needs. Everything's in great shape. Nothing's broke. He goes, we have got to spend money on Hearst equipment. I said, like what? He said, like Hearst hose. Nope, don't need it. A month later, I get Hearst hose sent to my truck. Why? Because it was a line item in a budget and the money couldn't be spent anywhere else. That money got wasted. That hose went into a closet and never got used. Our hazmat team received a grant from the federal government and bought millions of dollars of equipment they thought they wanted, and it got stored in a building and never got used. It makes me mad to think that twice the amount of money I paid in 2018 is being spent the same way Cobb County used to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. We got time for one more if you, if anybody wants to speak? Okay. Well, we really don't, but that's okay.
Good morning. Jason Foco. I believe I'm in, I'm in post four, district four. I'm the president of this AHOA at Cedar Mill Community off Cedar Crest Road. We're a little, about a month past 4th of July, and I just wanted to bring up to the commission a couple of incidents that happened and, I guess, bring your attention that nothing was really addressed. So we have a lot of fireworks that go on in our community. I do think it's pretty irresponsible that we allow aerial mortars to be blown off in residential neighborhoods where the houses are 20 to 50 feet apart. But two specific incidents. One, the, a neighbor of mine was setting off fireworks in the street, visibly intoxicated, called the police or sheriff's office. No response. At one point, they set off one firework, went underneath a car and blew up. More, a bigger incident, around the corner, there was a group of guys who stopped in the middle of the intersection, set off a massive amount of fireworks, picked up all the debris. They were nice enough to do that. Still smoldering. They deposited them into a neighbor's trash can. The neighbor was not home. They were not part of this. Set the trash can on fire, then set the house on fire. We identified the vehicle, located the vehicle, sent that to the sheriff's office. No response. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't think any of us want to live in a county where you can set someone's house on fire without consequence, but that's where we are. I talked to Dean about this maybe a month ago or so, so he recommended I come in here. Just wanted to bring this up to the county and see what we can do to get a little bit better response to these sorts of things and if we can get anything done about this now.
Thank you so much. That will be really the close of the questions, but I will recommend you're welcome to send a, your questions to Tabitha to answer. Ms. Pollard, I know you can't, I gotta use last names. But do we have time for you to briefly answer some of these at this time or?
If you don't mind, I'd like to take just for, just a moment. It will run a little bit over, but I think it'd be time well spent. So the property taxes that we're talking about today, so that small portion that we were talking about of the 17%, actually makes up 38, 41 million dollars, I'm sorry, 41 million of 137 million dollar budget. So it's a fairly small amount of maintenance and operations. The remainder comes from charges for services. There's sales tax. There's various other fines and forfeitures. There's various other revenues. What that money is used to fund is the court system. So the entire courthouse, the budget comes from that, from that operations budget. The sheriff's department is funded, the operations piece is funded by this maintenance and operations. The road department is funded by this maintenance and operations. Stormwater, recycling, just to name a few. The largest being sheriff's office, detention, and transportation are funded with the operations of, from the maintenance and operations budget. What drives that up? So that's what, why do you need more money? We have incurred several issues over the past few years. And while our largest expense is personnel, so our largest expense are our people that are providing those services, the people and the benefits. Retention has been a problem. You can ask Sheriff Henson, retention's been a problem. We've had a bit of a retention problem within the fire department. One of the things I've heard was that we need to improve our sheriff's department and our fire department. Well, to do that is personnel. To do that is an increased cost because it's become extremely competitive over, really since 2020. I've seen overwhelming competition between counties and cities as far as being able to retain these people. We don't want the new guy off the street. We want the guy that's got a little bit of time, the experience to be able to, to be responding to those calls. But if we don't pay them, we'll be, we will be training them and then they will leave and go to somewhere else that, that will, that will pay them. So salaries and benefits has been a big cost. As far as your departments, we went back, this was, the budget was quite, process was quite extensive this year in that we actually needed a little more to fund this budget, to be able to provide the services. The inflation cost is going up. Like I said, the personnel and benefits is the biggest cost that's of the, of the county budget. We sent back the budgets to departments, so we first asked them to provide what they had requested or what they needed to provide the service. Then we sent it back to them and we did ask them to reduce their budget. We went back to, and we were given quite a few reductions in that budget. We, actually, I had to cut about a little over $2 million out of the budget to be able to make it, to be able to make it work. So they were very instrumental in trying to reduce those taxes. We don't take it lightly. I don't think you have a department head here that takes it lightly as far as what they're spending in the, in the budget. If anyone would like to, to kind of give, to get a better education of how our budget works and what we do, I'd be more than happy to spend a little bit of time with them. The school system, y'all have heard a lot about the school system. The school board has public meetings. They held these same three public hearings that, that we're, that we're in the process of holding today. So if anybody wants to go back to the school system, I would recommend you go to, to attend their school meetings to, to give them your concerns. They basically send us a letter that tells us what they need their millage rate to be to provide their, the services, the education budget for the upcoming year. And we really don't have a choice as far as what to do with that. So we're, your hands are kind of tied. You are the living authority. So you have, it has to come before you, but we're pretty much at their mercy once they've given us that, that letter and that instruction. So I think I've answered everything if y'all, or a lot of the questions. I'm sorry, I'm not going to answer, be able to answer all of them. But I think I've touched on the highlights of what everybody had questions about.
Ms. Pollard, I know that when we worked on the budget and everything, can you share with them how much just insurance and benefits went up? It was quite high. Do you remember?
Yes, sir. I mean, overall, it was, it was a $6 million increase in insurance benefits. And that goes to several different factors. I mean, the, the price of medical services is, is rising. I mean, there's, and there's not much we can, that we can do about it. We are making efforts to try to bring that down. I hope that next year we see a decline in those costs. But currently, that's what the, that's what the increase was.
I'm optimistic that we will, and I will tell you this, and thanks for y'all attending. But I will tell you that I put in many long hours, but she puts in, when I got here early this morning, she had been there quite a while. And I know James does too. These guys are citizens too, and they put, they pay taxes the same way we do. And we're trying to do what's best for the county and the individuals, and it's very hard. I know when you work on your personal budget, you have to cut, you have to do things, and you have to make some decisions. And we're doing it for a bigger budget and for a bigger county. So I want to say thank you for everything you do and the many hours. And James, you too, for what you've put in to that. So that really concludes the regular. You want to comment?
I just want to know how many of you guys have gone online and looked at the proposed budget for the upcoming year? And if you have, give us suggestions. Tell us, tell us what else we can do to cut this budget. I've heard on one side that you want the sheriff's department and the fire department to have what they need. I do too. I'm one of the biggest proponents of our sheriffs and our fire department, public safety as a whole. I come from a family of public safety. I want them taken care of so they can take care of everybody in this county. Our roads, I don't know of a road that you can't go down right now in Paulding County that isn't being worked on or is in the budget to be worked on. So I'm really not understanding that. That takes a huge, huge chunk out of our budget. Asphalt, look at the asphalt prices. They are, I mean, it's unfathomable what we are paying to get these services done. Ashley Henson, our sheriff, he needs more people. We have to pay them more, give them more as far as benefits to keep his people, as well as the fire department, as well as any department really in this government. We have to pay them to keep them because the private industry is wanting them. And they are taking them from us because they do pay more. So please, if you have suggestions, go online and look at the budget. See where we can cut. And I mean, we can talk about it, but I, I saw one hand that actually went online and looked at the budget. It's been there. So please, I encourage you to look at it and show us. Give us your suggestions. That's what we're here for, to hear you.
Can I ask where to go specifically for the budget? Oh, I'm sorry.
Talk with Ms. Pollard after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners, any other comments?
Yeah, Tim, I'd like to make a comment, just one point to make, I think, well, multiple, but time constraints. What we control as far as the millage weight, rate, and what I, what I mean by we, we control a small portion of the millage rate. And then net change to you on that millage rate is zero from last year. It has not gone up one iota of anything. So what we control on that millage rate is a, is a net zero to your taxes. There's other things that affect it that make it go up just slightly, a couple of dollars and cents here and there. But that is what we're, we had to advertise that it went up only because a certain portion went up, but another certain portion came down appropriately, the, the exact same amount. So I just want to make sure that everybody in here understands that, that part of it.
Go ahead, Virginia.
Hi. I wanted to just say, there was a couple of things that I heard that I just wanted to address. And, you know, I appreciate every one of you coming here. And I know, I know what it's like to struggle to pay taxes. And I know how they've gone up too. I've lived here for 30, 30 something years, and I understand that completely. I want to tell you that we take it very, very seriously. A friend of mine said, we need to doge all the counties. I said, doge us, please. I want, we want to show you how it's done. Because we doge us every year, don't we, Tabitha? And we sit down and go through that budget line by line and say, how can we save money here? But I did want to address the thing about when we have more residents, why are taxes going up? That's kind of a complex question, but I'm going to try to answer it as simply as possible. So basically, most of your tax that's going up is your school tax. It costs $14,000 a year to educate a student if they don't have any special needs. And a lot of our students do have special needs these days because autism is so high and then a number of other factors come into play. A lot of these kids are being raised by grandparents and the kids have been through trauma with parents, with drug abuse and all kinds of things. So that is a very expensive venture. We can't charge a household enough to pay for their kids to be educated. Now, again, we don't, we don't set the school tax. The school board sets that. But that might help explain it for you. As we get more students, our costs go up. As we get more residents on the county side with not thinking about the school board, our cost goes up also. Most of your firefighters, most of their calls are 911 calls for emergencies, for EMT type things. So the cost of everything is going up. And we are really trying to hold the line and we're looking for efficiencies all the time. We talk about how can we save money for the taxpayer? My passion is to save money for you. I want to do that. I also want to make sure that you are taking all your exemptions that you are entitled to. Please talk to the tax commissioner, not the tax assessor, the tax commissioner, and ask him what your exemptions are. We have a senior exemption for school taxes now. It is later than Cobb, but you know what? Cobb's got like 70 million more businesses than we do. So they can afford to do that before we can. But anyway, we have a veterans exemption. We have disability exemptions. We have a lot of different exemptions available. So please call the tax commissioner, and she is very nice and capable, and thank you for whoever said that. She does do a great job and we appreciate her. And she will, she or someone in her office will be happy to walk through those exemptions with you so that you make sure you're getting everything that you're entitled to. But understand, just like your costs have gone up, our costs have gone up. Our employees' costs have gone up. And we can't afford to lose people who have institutional knowledge here in our sheriff's department, in our fire department, in any department. We have to pay. When we lose people, we have to pay to retrain them. It takes a long time to get them up to speed, depending on the department and the job. So I just want to throw that out there. But I do totally appreciate you coming. And I know it's hard to get up there and stand up and speak sometimes, but I am glad that you came. And I have written down, as much as I could, what you said. So we will take a look at everything that we can. I'm always frustrated by the school situation and that we can't change that. We're not allowed to. We have to vote on it today, whether or not we're going to accept it. But our only choice is to vote yes or no. If we vote no, their whole process starts over and they could come back higher or they could come back the same. And then, and then it would delay the tax bills. And so we are kind of, as Tabitha said, at their mercy to a great degree. So be in touch with your school board, but, but they have a lot of frustrations too, I'm sure. But anyway, talk with them about that. Thank you for all your participation and I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the commissioners? I will tell you this, as Dave Ramsey, one of my mentors, says, if you don't have the money, don't buy it. Thanks for Tabitha, because there's a lot of things I want to see and it takes money and she holds me back. And I think you got to have somebody to hold you back. You've talked about 70% more industry in other counties. Bear with me, guys. We will have it. We've got a process. We've got a plan and it, it will take place. It just takes time. And when that does, I think you'll be happy with our discussion today. We are actually 20 minutes overdue. We've got people standing in the hall, so I'm going to take another five minutes for a break for our commissioners. And then we will start with our BOC meeting. So I need a motion that we, we close this session of regular business and adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close and adjourn.
Okay. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll adjourn. We'll take.